on the reuse of the site and to evaluate it for affordable housing and veterans' use. We came back on March 9th of 2023 with the results of that study, which I'll go through briefly, so you have the full background. And in March 2023, the board was, after hearing the report, was interested in getting additional information on the reuse of the building just as a veterans' community use. Next slide. So in order to do this evaluation, we secured some experts to help us with the evaluation, and we engaged with the community throughout the entire process very heavily. We first engaged an architecture firm to look at the site, just to see if a housing development, affordable housing development could fit on the site. We had our economics firm evaluate that site planning to see if there was a feasible reuse for an affordable housing developer. And then we also engaged a historic architecture firm to do a historic resource evaluation, because the building was over 50 years old. Next slide. So as part of the architecture work, Kavamasi, who we engaged, did some studies of the site. And just to note that there was no option where we could fit housing on the site along with keeping the building. So that was eliminated pretty quickly as an option. We have to tear the building down in order to build anything new on the site. There were some variety of levels of density and height that were evaluated. Option three that you see, this is just a amassing study, shows an option that has 52 units of housing and about 7,500 square feet of veterans' community space could fit on the site. It would require five to six stories of development. And surrounding the site are two-story multifamily on two sides and single family on the third site. And then the highest elevation on Redwood Road. Next slide. The options that you just saw, the amassing study on, showed the different densities. And then our economic consultant kind of helped us evaluate with some affordable housing developers. And unsurprising, next slide, is that the more dense site was the most feasible, because it hits that sweet spot of at least having 50 units on the site, which we had developers express interest in that type of development. But we do note that it's quite a dense and tall structure for that particular neighborhood. Next slide. The historic resource evaluation determined, based on the significance of the building and being in fairly original condition, that it would be eligible for the California Register of Historic Places. It would not be eligible for the National Register. And it's considered a historical resource under CEQA, even though it's not placed on the register yet. We have to treat it as though it is. And to move forward with affordable housing mixed-use development, the board would have to consider, we'd have to prepare an environmental impact report, adopt mitigation monitoring, and potentially a statement of overriding considerations before approving the demolition of this structure because of that historic evaluation. Next slide. We also have to take into consideration the Surplus Lands Act. If we were to go forward with affordable housing, we would use the affordable housing exemption under the act and go forward with an RFP under that exemption. If we don't do affordable housing and keep the building, it wouldn't apply, as it would continue to be a county use and property. Next slide. In addition to the environmental impact report, if we go forward with housing, the property is currently zoned for public facilities. The reuse of the property for residential units would trigger both a rezoning and a general plan amendment. And wanted to note that the property is not currently identified as a housing element site. And if there's any questions about that, the housing element, Albert Lopez, our planning director, can review that document regarding what's in the Castro Valley area or the unincorporated county. Next slide. So after the March 2023 download of the information I just presented, we did get direction to go back and work with the veterans group and evaluate sort of a single use, not tearing down the building and coming up with an evaluation of a community and veterans' use. We did explore a variety of options. We worked with GSA and county council, and the veterans, the county's Veterans Services Office, about using the space for veterans' services. We talked to the veterans' organization about their desire to do volunteer labor. And so we chased down all of those options. And there were some possibilities, but they were all very infeasible, based on this being a county building and having to be built to a county minimum standard. And so in order to get an idea of a cost for the county to renovate the building, we retained the services of MAC5, their cost estimating and project management firm that the counties used quite a lot, and they understand the county process. And they came up with an analysis of renovating the building to its former condition, but obviously up to code. It is not currently up to code, and that estimate is $8.5 million. Next slide. There's been substantial community input since this project started, starting in 2020, when the veterans were interested in this project. We had a series of meetings directly with the veterans' group as we worked through the affordable housing options. We've been to the Castro Valley MAC four times. The last meeting was July 21st, 2025, and there were about 55 people who attended and spoke in support of retaining the building for a community and veterans' use. The Parks and Recreation Historic Commission has weighed in several times, I think three times. The latest was a letter that they sent to the board on September 4th, 2025, to urge the board to retain the building because of its historic nature. We've been to the Transportation and Planning Committee, unincorporated services, and obviously to the board a few times. And then lastly, I wanted to note that Hayward Area Recreation and Park District, since subsequent to me preparing the staff report, has also submitted a letter to the board indicating their support as a potential partner in operating and maintaining the building, should it become a county building that we would renovate, which is probably the newest information since we've talked publicly about this. Next slide. So we have pursued the directions that we've been given and prepared the information, presented it fairly widely. And so we're before you today to get sort of some final direction, to pursue the original 2020 direction, to secure affordable housing veterans' space at this site, with a caveat that will, in order to make that project feasible, will probably, will need to secure some local funding for the affordable housing project. We don't have a number, because we haven't secured any conversations with developers, but we think somewhere in the range of $10 to $15 million would be needed to make for that local match for affordable housing. Option number two is to retain the Castro Valley Library Building for a community and veterans' use. Consider an allocation of $8.5 million. The funding has not been identified. And direct staff to engage with HARD on this possible partnership of operating and maintaining the building. That concludes my staff report. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much. Supervisor Miley.
Thank you, Vice Chair and Chair Tam for this meeting. Yeah, let me kind of frame this and speak to this. You know, clearly, I'm in support of retaining the Old Castro Valley Library Building for community and veteran service use. And then we also, in my conversations with the Community Development Agency, we also have a possibility of funding that we can use for getting us on the road to renovation, and then partnering with the ultimate operations of the facility by HARD. So that's the, you know, the direction I want to go in. Now, Eileen Dalton from our Civic and Economic Development Department has kind of laid out a history, but I've lived this history with a number of board members, and we're here once again today. And I hope we can move in the direction of the alternative that I'm proposing. The board directed staff, as Eileen pointed out, to look at the possibilities of housing. You know, I was opposed to that. I believe Supervisor Hagerty was opposed to it as well. It's not as though Castro Valley doesn't support affordable housing. You know, there's the eating housing development down on Grove Way that's come about. We're also potentially looking at affordable housing that could take place at the site of First Presbyterian Church. I mean, there are other locations, as the staff's pointed out, for affordable housing in Castro Valley. So it's not an issue of not supporting affordable housing, you know? But three members of the board wanted that to be pursued. And we have spent, and I'm very frustrated about this, we spent so many years going down that path, which has been a total waste of time. Because right now, the staff's pointing out for us to go that way, it's going to cost more than $15 million. We're going to have to do rezoning. It's now a historical preservation, and there's a lot of hoops we'll have to jump through. So this is not a site for affordable housing. It's not appropriate for affordable housing. I see a lot of my friends in the audience, and I'm sure some are on the, virtually, to speak. You know, it's not always that folks in Castro Valley are united behind one thing, you know? And I can tell you, they are all united behind this building being retained for community and veteran services. They are all united behind that. And anyone who speaks to the contrary, quite frankly, is either not a resident of Castro Valley or hasn't been in Castro Valley very long. Otherwise, they are all united behind it, and they'll speak to that. And they've been extremely frustrated by this board of supervisors not moving the direction they wanted to be moved in more than five years ago. More than five years ago, thousands and thousands of people have signed petitions in support of the Old Castro Valley Library becoming a veterans' facility, community center. So countless time and hours and resources has been wasted on us pursuing housing. So I'm really hoping that this board, in its infinite wisdom, listens to the community of Castro Valley. That's one reason why they get so upset with the board at times, because we don't listen to them. If anyone knows Castro Valley well, trust me, it's me, after 25 years representing Castro Valley. I know my constituents extremely well. Now, I don't always agree with them, but I know them extremely well. And as I said, they're all united on this. And if they aren't, it's either because they haven't lived there very long, or they don't live in Castro Valley. And as far as I'm concerned, obviously, it's taxpayers' money. We've got to make a decision, because it's a, you know, public responsibility. In fact, we're fiduciaries. But the point is, you know, I don't give a lot of credibility to anyone who does live in Castro Valley. It's all like somebody who lived in Castro Valley speaking on something in Oakland, when they don't have any, you know, any, you know, dog in the hunt, any steak in the game. And I just use Oakland as an example. It's not as though Castro Valley is concerned about speaking on issues in Oakland. I just threw that out, so please don't get offended by that. They also feel that Castro Valley, this is, the Old Castro Valley Library is their library, because there was a history of this library being developed as a result of the taxpayers in Castro Valley. When I came in office, we moved in the direction of building a new library. That's been quite remarkable, and this building has stayed vacant for all that time, which has been many, 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 many years. And so finally, folks decided what direction they wanted to go with on the Old Castro Valley Library. The veterans have collected a lot of signatures. My office has been engaged in this for quite a while. So I think today, you know, the staff's pointed out, the background, the history, and the rationale behind, I think, the decision the board needs to take. And when it comes an opportune time to make the motion, I just wanted to kind of single where I'm going, as well as indicate my frustration with the board. Once again, not this board, but with the board historically not supporting the community of Castro Valley. So those are some of my remarks at this point in time, but you'll hear from others, trust me. Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor Miley, for that historical context. I will go with Supervisor Marquez, then Supervisor Halbert, and then Supervisor Fortunatabas.
Thank you, Chair Tam. So I have lots of questions, and I don't expect staff to have all of the answers at this moment, but just want to put on your radar. Number one, my understanding was veterans' services were being relocated to Hayward on Foothill Boulevard. I don't know the status of that, whether that's opened or not. Number two, I want to see what are the plans in our CIP? Because my understanding is we don't have enough funding to even keep up with the deferred maintenance for our existing veterans' buildings. So it's not that I'm opposed to this. And I also heard staff say, we haven't even identified the money for the renovations. So I just want us to be realistic in the next steps. The one thing that I'm very excited about, because when this was first brought to my attention, and my district director also went on a site tour with others, it was less than a quorum for that visit. But what I wanted to say was the relationship with HARD. So when this was first brought to my attention, and I've been very vocal, the county already owns over 120-something buildings that we can't even maintain. Our portfolio is expansive, and this might be a great idea, but it's about the long-term sustainability and maintenance of it. So I am hopeful that HARD is willing to take that on, because if we pursue this, we will absolutely need a partnership to sustain it, to make it open and accessible to veterans as well as other community members. But I basically just need more information. So I'm definitely in support of advancing, exploring, but we have to be able to answer all of those questions. And I do think that it's not fair. We have to prioritize all the asks, right? So if our other veteran buildings are already dilapidated, deferred maintenance, I can't in good conscience agree to spend $8.5 million on something new when we can't even maintain what is currently in our portfolio. I don't know, staff has a response to?
Supervisor Miley's anxiously trying to respond to you.
Yeah, I can respond, and staff can respond, too. The CDA directly can respond on the use, on our possibilities of funding. I know the community would also probably do some GoFundMe if necessary, but if we do have a potential source to get us moving along on this. We've had an extremely good partnership with HARD. HARD, the county owns the Cherryland Community Center. We built that with redevelopment money. HARD operates it for us. We have a very strong relationship with them. And as HARD knows, I kind of look at HARD as the recreational arm of the county. So what would happen here is, we would be county property, HARD would operate it for us, and we, and I think when HARD speaks, we might get an indication of that as well. So I think all your questions can be responded to, if not by me, by the staff. And as I said, I have lived this.
Thank you.
Sandy, you're very, Community Development Agency Director. With regard to vet services on Foothill Boulevard, I'll leave that to Eileen to answer. But in terms of plans in the CIP, Kimberly Gassaway, Director of GSA, is online if we want to dive in further there. But as it relates to the funding and relationship with HARD, I think we have a really strong letter in terms of support. Their board has not acted yet, but with that letter, we're feeling pretty confident, because we do have a strong relationship with HARD. And we look to them, because they're great operators and deal with maintenance in a real positive way. And I think the community supports HARD strongly as well. So if Kimberly could come on, as it relates to plans in the CIP, she can talk about that. But with regard to the unincorporated area budgeting, what we're looking at is, for the Essential Services Fund, for the unincorporated area, because there's a number of projects that we're looking to fund through that additional funding that's allotted for, that will be allotted or discussed with your board further for unincorporated area. This would be one of those projects, depending upon.
Are you referring to Measure W, Sandy?
W, yes.
Okay.
Essential Services, for Measure W.
Got it. Just want to be clear. Okay. Thank you.
I don't have any information on the status of the veterans' services move to Hayward. Maybe, maybe Kimberly does, but I don't.
Actually, I do, because it was presented to the Social Services Committee. So they are planning on moving just the Veterans Service Center out of the Eastmont Mall into the site that's in Hayward, the former Assessment Center site. And they mentioned to us that they're in the process of just dealing with some final touches, and it had more to do with the IT system, the, and so they expect that to be opening before the end of the year.
And also, I don't think, I mean, when the community speaks, I mean, it'd be nice if the veterans' center were located to the Castro Valley Library. But I don't think that's the issue around using the Castro Valley Library for community and veteran services, that we have to have the county's veteran center located there.
Right. And Social Service also mentioned that they are hoping to get some satellite sites to basically be more responsive to the veterans, especially those that are disabled and are unable to go to a specific site, including using technology.
Okay. And then just one follow-up question for County Council. The MOU, the operating agreement, sorry, I don't know if you guys are hearing my grandmother speak, but she's really loud. I don't know if it's picking up on the audio. But County Council, can you speak to the MOU? Who would be responsible for liability? If there were any incidents or injuries on the property?
I would need to look into that and come back to you with that information. I don't have that in front of me right now.
Thank you.
And if I could just weigh in once again, this is not novel. We, HARD manages the Cherryland Community Center under an MOU with the county. It took a lot of time to work out. That MOU could mirror what we do at the Castro Valley, Old Castro Valley Library. This is, it may be County Council can't speak to it now, because she's not prepared, but we have a working model in place as I speak, and it's worked extremely well. And I think redevelopment, when we had redevelopment, was really engaged with bringing that about, redevelopment, GSA, and HARD.
Yes, just to add on to that one, we developed the Cherryland Community Center. The county did all of the design work in partnership with HARD. They were at every meeting with our architects. We designed it in partnership, so they could program it. And then also executed a long-term lease, operating and maintenance agreement, so that the county is not funding any of the operations and maintenance. It's all being handled by HARD. Pardon? We spent more than two years. It was a, it was a long process, but it's been seamless and an excellent partnership with HARD. And the capital side is always daunting, but operating and maintaining long-term is even harder to accomplish. So that's why HARD's such a great partner.
Supervisor Marquez, did you have any follow-up on that?
No, I'm good. Thank you.
Okay. Supervisor Halbert.
Yes, thank you. I'm eager to hear the comments from the public. I wasn't on board when this site was originally considered for affordable housing. Of course, we need housing. Of course, we need affordable housing. There are other parts of the county that is perfectly capable of holding housing. We have to be cognizant of all of our assets and how we can maximize housing across our county. This site is not one of them. It's so close to a neighborhood, it just is impractical. And therefore, I support a community center, community use, community benefit, an essential service for this site. I also echo concerns by my colleague around, around cost. Indeed, we have to be prioritizing our costs. We have to also be prioritizing our sources of revenue. My question for staff is, and I compare this to when I was mayor in a city, and this is essentially, we're the mayor of this city. It's unincorporated. It's our jurisdiction. How do we typically, what are the mechanisms available to us to raise funds for projects like this, community benefits? In an incorporated city, we look to developers of projects. Supervisor Miley outlined projects that are on the horizon that could perhaps contribute to the community benefits. How do we, we've collected fees in the past, and we have the opportunity to work with HARD to pass those fees on to them. I want to make sure, one, to just outline what activities we currently do to raise funds, what activities we currently do to channel those funds to our community needs, and are we doing everything we can to maximize the collection of fees for these kinds of capital-intensive projects? And that's just maybe a quick comment or a quick answer, if you could provide. But if there are any more things we can do to generate funding, we can grow our way into providing these community benefits, as opposed to cutting from other areas to cobble the funding together. So that's a CDA question, I guess, for Sandy or Eileen.
Sure. Well, two, two things. The Cherryland Community Center model was one where we funded the capital side, and then the, and HARD came on as the operator, funding all of the operations and maintenance, requiring no funding from the county, once we handed it over to HARD. Our old source of funds, the way we really accomplished all of these community benefits was through our former redevelopment agency. And it was a huge blow to our, our infrastructure and our opportunities. These kinds of projects would have been funded for these last 10, 12, 15 years since redevelopment has gone away. And that's how we funded the Cherryland Community Center. There has not really been any replacement for that lost funding source, and, which is evidenced by these needs that go unmet. I think HARD could probably speak to their, they've passed a bond measure to fund community projects. It's been wildly successful. They've committed all of their funds, though. They don't have any left. They'd have to go back out to the voters. And I suppose that's probably our only option for raising funds from the county's perspective.
I will add that, from the redevelopment funds, the board has allocated pretty much the last of the Tier One money to projects. And so as it relates to revenue and where we could get other sources for capital, it is really limited, and that's why we'd be looking to the opportunity now with the Essential Services Fund for unincorporated area for a particular project such as these.
Through the chair, if I could also add, you know, through my office, I provide about $500,000 to $600,000 annually to, I mean, to Ashland Reach. Now, in my conversations, not with this staff, but with the healthcare staff, through Measure C, the pediatric portion, if I don't have to provide funding to reach to the tune of half a million, excuse me, yeah, quarter of a million, excuse me, half a million to 600,000, then... of half a million, yeah, quarter of a million, excuse me, half a million to 600,000, then I'll be able to use funding to put towards this as well, you know, to, you know, to the that that extent, or at least even if I can't go up to half a million, a quarter of a million or something, but I'm willing to use resources out of my office as well directed to the Old Castro Valley Library.
Okay, thank you. Supervisor Halbert, did you have any follow up on any of the responses?
No, I think indeed redevelopment going away was a big cause of this. Thank you for the clarification.
Okay. Supervisor Fortuna Adabas.
Thank you. I definitely appreciate the history from my colleague, as well as hearing his position and respect that. I do have a couple of questions just to get up to speed, two of them related to housing and one of them related to to capital. So I I would just like to hear a little bit more about why this site wasn't included in the housing element and in general, how we're doing meeting our RENA goals.
Well, before Albert speaks, you know, for RENA goals, we're going to have to come up with about 4,700 housing units in the unincorporated area. They've identified sites. Obviously, you know, we can't force people to build, but this wasn't one of the sites that was identified. But go ahead, Albert.
That's correct. We did have 4,700 unit RENA obligation. We did find sites throughout the unincorporated county to meet that number. The library actually was was never considered. We knew that there was other plants on the table or sort of under development. And so that's why it wasn't included in the in the inventory initially.
Thank you. And in the report, it talks about some potential interest from affordable housing developers. Could you speak more to that? How real is that, for example?
Yeah, you know, the the study that was done by Kavamasi was presented, those three options of density, where it was presented to a handful through our our economics consultant to get feedback. And there was interest, and they their feedback was out of those options. I think the least dense was 28 units, the highest density 52, that there was interest in the site and that, but the interest was that it was most feasible for the highest number of units for those reasons related to the cost of construction and managing units, which put it at a five to six story building, six stories in the front, five in the back, for that neighborhood, which was fairly dense. But there there was interest. And this was several years ago, though. Money is obviously the the key as well.
Thank you. Good to hear that. It was several years ago. Now it's much, much harder to build, of course.
Correct. It was 2021, probably when we had those conversations with the developers.
Okay, yeah, the cost of construction is a lot higher now. Thank you. And then finally, noting that we allocated $6.1 million for critical county infrastructure in the unincorporated through our Measure W Essential Services Fund, I'm wondering if staff could speak more to covering the 8.5 million that it would take for the renovation.
That was not included in the 6.1. I mean, as Supervisor, as Director Gasaway had mentioned, that it included social services and other healthcare services buildings. So that was not in that 6.2.
Thank you for that. I look forward to public comment. And just based on the discussion so far, I am inclined to support my colleague from District Four.
Through the chair, too.
Supervisor Miley.
Get all excited about this stuff. But I think with the housing piece, if we're to move forward with the housing piece, there would need to be a rezoning, right? And we'd also have to address the historical preservation issue. And I think those are two big hurdles, really huge hurdles, in addition to the cost, you know. That's why we just don't think this is a suitable suitable site. And then the other thing, you know, Albert knows, the staff knows, I've been pushing, and John McPartlin, who's former BART director, I've been pushing so we could develop the Castro Valley, you know, BART station, that property for housing. It's it, I'm trying to get a more movement on that with the current BART director, Melissa Hernandez, who happens to work for Supervisor Albert. So it's not presently in the housing element, but they know I'm very supportive of us moving that piece along because that could be a very good site. But as I said, it's not presently in our housing element for this RENA cycle.
I just have a couple of questions. I also support the concept and the vision of having this become a community center, whether it's for veterans' use or other community uses because of the adjacent land uses that are in this area. But I I'm also concerned about the cost. I'm also concerned about the funding access because, as we know, we do have some allocations that we're talking about prospectively for Measure W. And so we're still trying to juggle and prioritize what those needs are. So one of the things that I've explored with Director Gasway was the model that was used with the Cherryland Community Center where HARD did take over operations and maintenance because I would like to see that be a good model for this site because it's, it would be more sustainable. But in terms of the initial cost, can you explain the difference between like a ground lease versus a license agreement and like what legally, like, for example, HARD can do in terms of renovation of the building and how the funding could flow? Because I'm hoping like perhaps HARD can also use some of their funding, but they obviously wouldn't do that for a site that they don't own, right?
I think that's something that we could investigate. I couldn't speak to that today. I'd have to talk to council and see what options we would have. I'm most familiar with the Cherryland Community Center model, where we developed the the plans in partnership with HARD. We executed the construction and delivered the building in a warm handoff to HARD for them to operate and maintain long term. If there's other models that could be more efficient and work within the county system, we'll investigate those for sure.
No other questions from, excuse me, Supervisor Miley?
Yeah, sorry. I just wanted to add on to what Eileen was saying. One reason she can't answer it is because she's directed by the board to pursue housing. If the board gets on option two, we can begin to look at all these possibilities.
Okay. I appreciate that. Let me open it up for public comments. And how many speakers do we have?
We have 13 speakers total.
Okay, two minutes each because we still have two other items to go through today. Thank you.
The first in-chamber speakers, and you can line up, please. Tom Lorenzen, Richard Kalish, Frank Mellon, and Peter Rosen.
My name's Tom Lorenzen. I'm a member of the Castro Valley History Museum Board, former member of the Eden Health District Board. And I want to thank all of you on the Board of Supervisors for your diligence on this and Supervisor Miley for your passion and advocacy. And GSA, they've done a great job working with us. As you can see, there is very overwhelming support for this project to do, to be a community center. And we had at the last MAC meeting, I think, 18 people that testified. I was one of them. Everybody in support of this project. There was overwhelming community support and a great opportunity. The library has always been a heart of Castro Valley. I grew up there myself. The library has been the heart and soul. It's the social center of Castro Valley. And that building was paid for by the Castro Valley taxpayers voluntarily to make our community a better place. And now it can be repurposed back to continue for that community building purposes. And I just think there's a very strong support. And the HARD involvement is critical. And they stepped up to the plate here, and they are very strong supporters of this. And that gives us the real chance to make this a sustainable operation for not only years, but for decades to come. Thank you for your time.
My name is Rick Kalish. I am a veteran from the Air Force, and I support using this building for the Veteran Center and also for the Historical Society. Many, many years ago, before the freeway on ramps and off ramps were put in, the American Legion had a building in Castro Valley. It was taken over by eminent domain, so it would be nice to have a building back. One of the things that I have just recently come to my opinion is that with the government deploying National Guard in many cities and everything, some of the public views might be getting against the military again. And I think having this building and having veterans as members of the community and active military would give us a better view in the community. I am also a member of First Press Church, and currently we house 75 people between our Hayward Center and and our First Press Church every night for our unhoused neighbors. Little side issue is that the old Castro Valley welcome sign that is currently hidden away in some storage locker, I think would sit great right in front of the new Veterans Community Center. So I'm all for that. You know it. Yes, sir. I would love to have that there. So thank you for my time.
Sorry about that curve ball there. That was, it's still throwing me. I'm Peter Rosen. I'm on the HARD board, and I want to say good morning, happy birthday. And I'm here asking for your support to renovate the Old Castro Valley Library. I want to, I'm not going to reiterate a lot of the points that Supervisor Miley is well aware of, that he explained very well to everyone here. I'm asking you to direct county staff to work with HARD on another successful partnership. As Supervisor Miley pointed out, the Cherryland Community Center is the perfect model for what we have here. The Cherryland Community Center houses a branch of the Alameda County Library. It has a daycare. We operate all kinds of programming, multi-generational. We have community use. There's all kinds of organizations, La Familia, the Cherryland Community Center, Cherryland Community Association. Oh, gosh, I just totally blinked. But we have, we have a lot of community organizations that we rented out to for free. And I don't see why we can't be doing something similar here because we have partners that actually work successfully. I think that that's the kind of thing that the community demands. We have, as Supervisor Miley has mentioned, it's very rare that we have everyone in the community aligned on one thing. And I've been to a lot of MAC meetings, and I've never been to a MAC meeting where all of the speakers, online, in person, and the MAC, all said the same thing, that they all think this is a great idea. We have community support. And HARD would be asking to do a similar model. We have, you know, we don't have to reinvent the wheel. We can take the existing MOU for Cherryland and and adapt it. I'm asking for your support so that we can actually take action because there's nothing for us to take action on. That's why we have a a letter of support expressing that. That's why I'm here, as well as our Director of Arts and Community Services and Recreation, who's here, and our community. We have wide community support from people that are here. They're all partners. We want to make this happen. It's a win-win for the entire community. So thanks.
Frank Mellon, former East Bay Board Member, retired by choice. You've already had a couple of really great speakers talking about things. And one of the things that I heard very clearly as a level of concern was dollars. This thing is sitting there costing the county a bucket of money. And you have an opportunity to have this property moved to groups that will sustain it. Now, the cost of $8.5 million, I want you to consider for a moment. If you're going to do redevelopment, you're going to spend $50 million. You're being asked to spend $8.5 million. But there's also some possibilities here because the recommendation from the staff talks about seeing how this can develop. One of the things that I'm aware of is the HVAC system. It may not need to be replaced. It may just need to be upgraded because it was in pretty good shape a while back, and it's just been sitting there. There's some other things. Mr. Kalish was very kind about the old piece of statuary. How long have you guys been keeping that thing locked up and paying rent on it? It belongs where it can be seen in a good place for Castro Valley, and it's right there on that property. You know, when we talk about this stuff, one of the things we look at is where this is going to be. Where the facility would be on Redwood Road has wonderful BART access close by. I suggest to you that you accomplish many things. First of all, you have a good usage that's put to the community. Secondly, you'll save money because now you'll have a partnership. And third, you'll have a community that will really use the facility. I thank you for your time. And I, if I might, for one second, I want to thank staff for the time they took to come out to the library and talk with us. Their listening really meant a great deal. Thanks so much.
Caller, you're on the line. You have two minutes. Caller, please unmute. You have two minutes.
Yes, I just want to say I'm really saddened to hear a board of Democrats won't even bring up low income housing. And if you were around when it came to our tenant rights, one of the first things we learned is how little of available space we have in the unincorporated area to actually create low income housing. So to hear it not even being like brought up. And second, giving it to places like HARD. HARD, the barriers that HARD creates in order to use any of their stuff for common folks is almost impossible. So I think that is a horrible mistake right now. And when you try to go and call that out, people like Peter Rosen, who just got busted out for taking away people's constitutional rights, they don't try to resolve it. They make it more complicated. So that shouldn't be, those shouldn't be people that we're prioritizing. And same with that side of town. See, that side of town of Castro Valley is, it's, it's a town that is still under old Jim Crow lines. So every time people want to put low income housing on that part of town, you have the descendants, the sons and daughters of these people that had, that literally drew up old Jim Crow lines, saying, no, you need to give us, you know, historical land, you need to give us some type of extra park. That side of town has tons of parks. That that side of town has tons of resources. What that side of town doesn't have is low income housing. Because the same 100 people that are involved in the the MAC, the Castro Valley Democratic Club, and all the little organizations over here, it's the same circle that always voted down. Anytime we want low income housing, no, we promise the next time we have a a open space, we're going to put it there. But it never happens. And it's because the same family members, the same descendants, the same people are in charge, and they just keep shutting it down. We don't need another checkbox for HARD. We need low income housing in one of the most densely populated places in the country. Thank you.
Sandra Archuleta, you have two minutes.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. I would like to see affordable housing there. I've lived in Castro Valley about seven, eight years now. I'm really disappointed that that is not happening. We just lost another affordable housing site from the Mobile Home Parks on Castro Valley Boulevard. And it's the same chorus every single time that we want affordable housing. It's the same folks saying, we don't need it. And, you know, next time, we're going to find a better site. It's always a better site. As to, you know, I'm not opposed to it being a community center, but I will say that as someone that has worked with the organizations that were listed by the previous board member, the CCA, the ACA, SLAM, all these community groups, I'm the one that actually has to reserve those spaces, and it is impossible. It's so difficult to reserve those spaces for community use. The insurance issues alone are so overly complicated that even with our entire team, we have, it's taken us months to just resolve it. So any little community group that walks in and wants to use those spaces for so-called community use, they're not going to be able to do it because it is so burdensome. So if you are going to designate this for community use, So if you are going to designate this for community use, I really recommend that you set up a process and do some sort of waiver on the insurance because it is inaccessible, and it really requires a personal relationship and honestly, like, letters to the board to even get access to it. So regular community groups are not able to use these spaces. It is really, really difficult to access them. And so I really would recommend that you take a look at how community spaces are activated and how community, regular community members can use it without the barriers of insurance. The application is fairly simple, but there are other barriers that you need to be able to use it. So I recommend that you look at that.
Mark Crawford, you have two minutes.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Supervisors. I just want to thank Eileen for her, her and her staff's hard work on this issue over the years. I know I've been involved in it for over 10 years, dealt with it many times when I was on the MAC. This building is very important to Castro Valley. A lot of us grew up in this building. Our kids grew up in this building. And for the county to consider restoring this building for future generations would be just enormous, an enormous gesture of the county's responsibility towards Castro Valley. I don't want to be repetitive. There's been a lot of good points made. And I want to thank Supervisor Miley for him and his staff's hard work on this over the years as well. And I want to thank the Supervisors for their support that they've shown so far for Option 2. Thank you.
Carolyn Street, you have two minutes.
Thank you. I'm here to be one of many community members urging the use of the old library as a community center. One big reason is it's a lousy site for housing. And I'm exasperated that when good sites come up for nice, low-income housing, mixed-use, three-story, the county has allowed fast food places to go in. Currently, there's a big spot, and the county has allowed splash car wash to go in. Now, I love splash car wash, but there's another one nearby that I use. So why can't there be more affordable housing? You know, Hayward's getting a lot of nice affordable housing. Why do you want to? Just because the county owns it, we have to put in something that doesn't pencil out that's lousy. So I guess that's the end of my time, but also I want to point out that Castro Valley has very few buildings of historical interest. It's a lot of fast food and kind of a crummy little strip mall for our downtown. Anyway, thank you for letting me speak.
Our last in-person speakers are Linda Willis, John McPartlin, Linda Tangren, Adrian Lee Byrd, and Kellya Brew.
Good morning. My name is Linda Willis. I represent District 4 on the Alameda County Parks Recreation Historical Commission. I want to thank Supervisor Miley for his eloquent and very longtime support of preservation of the library. Also want to thank Eileen Dalton for her work on this for a long time as well and for a very good unbiased presentation today. But I want to speak to one issue that hasn't been brought up yet here today. So the PRHC mandate is preservation of historic resources in unincorporated Alameda County. In 2024, your board placed the Castro Valley Library on the Alameda County Register of Historic Resources, which protects this historic library, historic library, from demolition under SEQA. The county's historic ordinance created by the Board of Supervisors in 2012 outlines the maintenance requirements to repair and restore this building. As the owner of this property, you have the responsibilities to maintain it by your own county historic ordinance. For almost 50 years, so 50 years ago, Castro Valley citizens taxed themselves and helped build this library. For a long, from 1962 to 2009, the library was the intellectual educational center of Castro Valley. So this library is not just historic, but it's also important to people of Castro Valley. In 2025, this board could repurpose its historic resources for more important uses as a Veterans Center, community meeting space, and cultural center. The central location proximity to BART, may I have just a minute, half a minute to finish, please? I would really appreciate it.
Yes, please complete.
Thank you. I appreciate it. So the central location proximity to BART provides veterans, including disabled ones, improved transportation access to services, especially for those who commute from the Tri-Valley and Fremont. Unincorporated Castro Valley with close to 70,000 residents lacks sufficient meeting spaces. The repurposed library would help meet that need. Revenue sources, as a landmark, the library qualifies for state, the state register. Under qualified local government program, the county could easily apply for technical assistance and grants for historic reservation. And also, resources for the lease and rental of the library could help finance operating costs. Please vote for Option 2, retain the library, allocate the 8.5 million to renovation, engage with HARD for possible partnership for operations and maintenance. And thank you for the extended time. Really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. I am John McPartlin, Castro Valley resident, and I represent the military veterans in the entire community. I concur with and endorse the September 24th and 25th report to the Alameda County Board of Supervisors by the Alameda County Community Development Agency and quote them and the recommendations that they ended up making in relationship to using it as a community center. And I quote them in part. Let's see, the vets and other Castro Valley community groups are advocating for a community center that would include veteran services. In addition, HARD has been identified as a Hayward Area Recreation District, has been identified as a possible partner to operate and maintain the space, and this effort and this effort is supported by the veterans and other community advocates. That's pretty much is the most succinct way I have ever heard it put. And I was, what I had originally written rambled quite a bit more than that. That's it in a nutshell, a synergistic ability to deal with the community groups and have a space where they can end up doing that. And to that end, that ends my presentation. And now on to the personal end, I would like to end up commend and thank Nate Miley for the years, if not a decade plus or minus, that we have collectively worked on trying to get this done. Thank you very much. I appreciate your time.
Good afternoon, Honorable Board of Supervisors. My name is Adrian Lee Byrd, and I'm the Director of Recreation, Arts, and Community Services for HARD. Our general manager, Jim Wheeler, wasn't able to be here today. He's out on business, but wanted me to be here. HARD serves as the provider of recreation and park services for the majority of unincorporated, unincorporated Alameda County. We deeply value our longstanding partnership with Alameda County, which continues to demonstrate how collaborative efforts can leverage our combined resources to achieve meaningful outcomes for the communities that we serve. A successful example of this, as Supervisor Miley mentioned, is the Cherryland Community Center, where we operate and maintain and assume the liability for programs that take place there. It's actually one of our most active and well-utilized facilities in our district. And we were pleased to learn that the board is considering the potential development of the former Castro Valley Library site. I'd like to take this opportunity to express HARD's interest in operating and maintaining the site as a community and veteran services center should the county decide to renovate the building. This kind of partnership would further our agency's mission to enrich the quality of life for residents through inclusive recreational programs and facilities that meet the needs of a diverse community. It would also advance the board's mission to deliver accessible, effective services to county residents. By working together, we can achieve these shared goals in a more cost-effective and sustainable manner. Thank you so much for your time and your consideration. Thanks.
So I live in Fremont. In Fremont, we have a different way of doing things. We have, some of our most historic buildings were only built about 30, 40 years ago. That Mission Church, it's a replica. The first church was destroyed and kind of crumbled. And it's hard to survive in earthquake zones for hundreds of years. And in the East Asian tradition, I know that we don't respect that very much, but if you look at what they do, they tear down things and they rebuild them. And they do that repeatedly for various reasons. And this process of rebuilding and renewal follows along with the cycle of life. And in Castro Valley, there's an opportunity for this kind of thing, too. We could, there's a lot of good construction ideas. Now, the good thing, when you're doing new construction and you're the county, is you make your own rules and you do whatever you want. And in fact, if you look at that Cherryland Community Center, the cost per square foot of those buildings, fantastically low, a lot lower than any community center they're going to build in Fremont. It's shocking how cheap that thing was, and it looks pretty good to me. Looks just fine. So, you know, I want to know why all the other government agencies can't build any good facilities and why they cost way, way too much. This one, and let's go down the, what is the secret? They have no setbacks. They've built this thing really tall, right on top of somebody's backyard. They have no parking. They have, they have built, hardly any parking there. It's the utilization, the efficiency, this, all these, they have no hearings, government hearings. This thing did not go to the Planning Commission. It bypasses the Planning Commission, and you don't put your own rules and regulations on your own construction. The efficiency of this thing is amazing. I am very impressed.
Good afternoon. Thank you for having us. Thank you for the staff report. I prepared a four-act play here that we're not going to address because, and it's condensed version. It was a condensed version. But I do want to emphasize just a couple of things and not repeat what has already been said. In the 1950s, the taxpayers in Castro Valley asked the county Board of Supervisors to provide $32,500 to buy the property. They did. And then the taxpayers in Castro Valley taxed themselves 10 cents more on the tax rate to pay for the building that cost about $200,000. Castro Valley gets a bad rap, and I'm going to defend my community because everybody thinks that we don't want affordable housing. It's not that we don't want affordable housing. We believe in strong planning. We believe that a community should be planned that is livable. And that's why some of the things that we oppose is because we don't have the infrastructure to support that, which then makes the whole community be deprived of a livable community. So we get this bad rap. But however, when I sat on Redevelopment CAC and Redevelopment came to Castro Valley and asked to borrow some money to do an affordable housing project in Ashland, we didn't blink an eye, and we loaned the money. We didn't have to do that. We could have said no, but we didn't. So that's why I think every once in a while, I should defend my community, even though there are times that we could be wrong. The deferred maintenance that Supervisor Marquez talked about, we understand that. But this building is structurally and architecturally sound. It needs upgrades to meet codes. 8.5 million sounds like a lot of money, and it may be more than you need to spend. So take that into consideration. We'd like an epilogue to my four-act play. Please support Opposition, Option 2. Thank you.
Jason Cross, you're online. You have two minutes.
Hi there. Good afternoon. Am I too late to comment on item number eight today?
This is item number 10.
Okay. Sorry about that. Thank you.
Last speaker.
Thank you very much for all your comments and me return back to the board for deliberations. Supervisor Miley, you are not at loss for words, are you?
Oh, no. I was just respecting the chair. So if you're ready for a motion, Chair Tam, I'd like to move that the board accept recommendation number two, retain the old Castro Valley Library, building for community and veteran use. Consider allocation 8.5 million for renovation and direct CDA staff to engage with HARD on a possible partnership for operations and maintenance.
I'm happy to second that motion, but if I may clarify, I would like the staff to strongly find ways in which we can get HARD also to do the renovation more than just the operations and maintenance because despite one of the speaker's comments, it takes a long time for the county to get renovations done because I speak from experience with the San Leandro Veterans Center. That's been in need of an elevator for the last, I don't know, 20 years or so. So if there's any way whether we can do a license agreement or a ground lease where they can take some ownership of it and help with the renovation, obviously, we will contribute to the funding. But if we can pursue that option to help expedite that, that would be an exploration I'd like to see considered. Will the makeup of the motion be fine with that?
We will look at every option possible.
Okay.
Because we have good friends at HARD. I can't speak for what they're committed to, but we'll pursue every option possible.
Thank you. So we have a motion from Supervisor Miley, and I second it. I may have the roll call.
Excuse me, a point of order. I'm sorry, Supervisor Miley. Go ahead.
I think you wanted me to do something else, right? With the motion?
I was going to mention something in line with the motion that's on the floor, which is that it does implicitly revoke the board's prior March 10, 2020 resolution to pursue, pursue use of the property for affordable housing. So that would be implied in your, in your motion.
Yes, definitely. And also, speaking to the motion, I just want to mention the Cherryland Community Center does have a lot of parking. It's located at the Mecca Estates. Once again, someone who's not familiar with the community, as I am, and Peter and others, wouldn't know that there's a lot of parking right around the corner. A little, you know, less than five minutes walk into the center itself. So just want to, want to mention that, and we'll look at all options possible should the board pass this motion in order to move this project forward because, you know, it means a lot to the community. And as I said, it's not often that everyone in Castro Valley unites behind something. People who don't typically unite behind things, they're all united, and they really feel passionate about the fact that they paid for this. And it's something that they want to see preserved, and we'll pursue affordable housing at other locations. But I think this location
But I think this location is ideally suited for what the community wants. And with this board's direction, then we can get moving on that. And hopefully, we'll be able to bring it across the finish line in the near future. Because I know it takes a while. Thank you.
Okay, I appreciate county council's clarification of the reversal of the board's decision from 2020. And I do appreciate the staff's due diligence to look at whether it was feasible. And they came back, and there are a number of limitations to build affordable housing at this particular site. And perhaps that's one of the reasons it may not have been in the housing element. Because there's a lot of concerns that we will be hearing. And I recognize that it would cost even more to put housing on this site, especially if you're talking about a skinny five-story building. So appreciate that clarification. That motion includes the reversal and includes looking and pursuing option two with the direction to also look at options to shift the renovation cost also collectively with our partners. So may I have roll call vote on the motion, please? Oh, I'm sorry. Supervisor Marquez.
Thank you. I will be supporting the motion, but just want to reiterate, I know this is just advancing further exploration and due diligence, and I am in support of this in concept, but we clearly have many, many more unanswered questions. Specifically, I am concerned about adding more to our portfolio when we can't meet the needs of our existing veterans' buildings. So I want us to be fair, equitable, and balanced. So I'm hoping that we have some of those questions answered at a later date. But I am optimistic, especially since we have a willing, known, and well-respected partner with Hard. So I'm optimistic we'll figure it out. And it's, just to be clear to the public, it's not that I'm against this. It's just, it's our responsibility, as Supervisor Tam mentioned, an elevator is needed in one of the veteran buildings in San Leandro. So we have a lot of deferred maintenance throughout the entire county, and we really need to address that before we add anything else to our portfolio. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? If not, may I have roll call vote, please?
Supervisor Marquez?
Aye.
Supervisor Tam?
Aye.
Supervisor Miley?
An enthusiast, yes.
Supervisor Fortunato Bass?
Aye.
President Haubert?
Aye.
Thank you.
Aye.
You're freezing, but I think that's an aye. So the motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Linda, you are out of order.
Vote has been taken place. We want to wish you a happy birthday, Supervisor Tam.
Oh, thank you.
Happy birthday.
Apparently, chairing this meeting is my present.